Good evening, everyone, and welcome. I'd like to call the-
This meeting is being recorded and summarized.
Thanks for the warning. I'd like to call the City of Homestead Special Call Meeting to order. Today is Tuesday, June tenth, two thousand and twenty-five, and it is now six twenty P. M. Madam Clerk, can we have a roll call, please?
Councilman Cannibal? Councilwoman Bailey? Councilman Davis?
Here.
Councilman Roth? Vice Mayor Fletcher?
Here.
Mayor Lawson?
Here. All right. Mr. Manager, are there any additions, deletions, or deferrals?
No, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. Thank you, then. We have a first reading of card number forty-six thirty-six. Mr. Pearl?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. Tab one is the first reading of an ordinance of the City of Homestead, Florida, amending section sixteen twenty, application sixteen twenty-three, term and expiration of receipt of the City Code, providing for the issuance of the business tax receipt under certain circumstances, providing for inclusion in the code, providing for severability, providing for conflicts, and providing for an effective date.
Thank you. Does anyone need the staff report on this item? All right, let me open the public hearing on this matter. Anyone either online or in the chambers wishing to speak? Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing and entertain any questions from council or a motion to approve this item. Moved by Councilwoman Bailey? Seconded by Councilman Davis. Roll call, please.
Councilman Cannibal?
Yes.
Councilman Davis?
Yes.
Councilman Roth?
Yes.
Councilwoman Bailey? Vice Mayor Fletcher?
Yes.
Mayor Lawson?
Yes.
The motion carried.
And moving on to tab two, Mr. Pearl?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. Tab two is the first reading of an ordinance of the City of Homestead, Florida, amending chapter thirty zoning of the City Code of Ordinances to create a presumption of a violation of a portion of a recreational vehicle as expanded while parked on residential property, providing for definition of expanded, providing for conflicts, providing for severability, providing for inclusion in the code, and providing for an effective date.
Thank you. Is there any objection to waiving the staff report on this item? Is there anyone in the audience who would like to speak on this matter or online? On appearing, I'll close the public hearing and ask for a motion to approve.
I have a comment first.
Moved by Davis, seconded by Cannibal. Comment by Councilman Roth.
Thank you. Uh, thank you, Mayor. So, in our, in our ordinances, what is the, the penalty for this? Maybe?
Give me one second, sir. Mr. City Attorney, do you have the latest copy of the- the enforcement penalties?
It's in, yes, hold on, I'll pull up. We revised them recently. I believe that the first penalty was five hundred dollar fine, but I'll confirm.
Okay, so I just want to make sure that-
Well, and then a daily rate for non-compliance.
That, that's why I want to make sure that there, there, it's, even if with the fine, if they're caught and they're, you know, whatever, that it's not still profitable for them to keep somebody living there and paying the fines, right? That's, that's the only thing I want to try to avoid. We want to make this as-
Effective as well.
Exactly.
Our fine schedule is escalating. It was, you have multiple offenses, so it addresses that circumstance for repeat offense.
I'd be curious to, as, as we start to begin the enforcement role, to get notifications of properties that may be in- as we talked about earlier in the other meeting.
And, you know, I think first and foremost, this amendment provides more tools in the toolbag for our code compliance officers to make that initial contact, contact and inquiry, creating the presumptions of, of occupancy in travel trailers and R Vs.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Okay. Roll call, Madam Clerk.
Councilman Davis?
Yes.
Councilman Cannibal?
Yes.
Councilman Roth? Councilwoman Bailey? Vice Mayor Fletcher?
Yes.
Mayor Lawson?
Yes.
The motion carried.
And moving on, tab three, Mr. Pearl? Second reading.
Yes, Mr. Mayor. Tab three is the second reading of an ordinance of the City of Homestead, Florida, amending the City Code of Ordinances, chapter twenty-eight utilities, article eight electricity, division two deposits, rates and charges, section twenty-eight dash two fifty-six street lighting and rental outdoor lighting rates, to revise the rates charged for street and public property lighting and rental outdoor lighting, and to levy a rate for LED lighting, providing for conflict, severability, codification, and an effective date.
Thank you. Any final questions or comments from council on the second reading item? Updating charges and availability for the first time since two thousand and six. Seeing none, is there anyone in the audience or online wishing to speak on this matter? Not all, close the public hearing and ask for a motion to approve. Moved by Councilman Roth? Seconded by Councilman Cannibal, and a roll call, Madam Clerk, on second reading.
Councilman Roth?
Yes.
Councilman Davis?
Yes.
Councilwoman Bailey?
Yes.
Councilman Cannibal?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Fletcher?
Yes.
Mayor Lawson?
Yes.
The motion carried.
Very good. Thank you. Moving on to tab four, Mr. Pearl?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. Tab four is the second reading of an ordinance of the City of Homestead, Florida, amending the budget for the general fund of the city for the fiscal year beginning October one, two thousand and twenty-four, and ending September thirtieth, two thousand and twenty-five, by increasing the total budget expenditures by two hundred and fifty thousand dollars, providing for repealer, severability, and an effective date.
Thank you. Do we need any further staff report? I think this was vetted at our, our last meeting. Let's open the floor for any public comment, either in person or online. Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing and ask for a motion to approve this ordinance on second reading. Moved by Councilman Cannibal? Seconded by Vice Mayor Fletcher. Let's have a roll call, please, Madam Clerk.
Councilman Davis?
Yes.
Councilwoman Bailey?
Yes.
Councilman Roth?
Yes.
Councilman Cannibal?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Fletcher?
Yes.
Mayor Lawson?
Yes.
The motion ca-
And tab five, please, Mr. Pearl?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. Tab five is the second reading of an ordinance of the City of Homestead, Florida, amending the budget for the general fund of the city for the fiscal year beginning October one, two thousand and twenty-four, and ending September thirtieth, two thousand and twenty-five, by increasing the total budget expenditures by five hundred thousand dollars, providing for repealer, severability, and an effective date.
Thank you. Waive the reading of the staff report? Any public comment, either in person or online? Close the public hearing, and I'll ask for any questions, comments, or a motion to approve this item. Moved by Councilman Cannibal? Seconded by Councilwoman Bailey. No further comments. Roll call, please, Madam Clerk.
Councilwoman Bailey?
Yes.
Councilman Cannibal?
Yes.
Councilman Davis?
Yes.
Councilman Roth?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Fletcher?
Yes.
Mayor Lawson?
Yes.
The motion carries.
And moving on to tab six, this is a discussion item, car number forty-five eighty, art in public places, a wrapping of large electrical boxes. Mr. Manager?
Mayor and council, um, this item is going to be preceded with a presentation by the Director of Homestead Public Utilities, Ms. Barbara Quinones. Uh, this is something that has been tried and tested in several municipalities and has received widespread public reception in a very positive manner, where utility boxes and cabinets in public streets and public spaces are covered up with very tasty, nice-looking coverings of vinyl type that are anti-graffiti and also UV-resistant. Uh, this is an innovation that we'll love to see going forward. And subsequent to this rollout, it is our intention to make this a requirement of new installations as a code amendment. So at that, at this point, I would like Ms. Quinones to lead us on that presentation. Make it brief.
I will be brief. Be brief. Thank you, Mr. Manager. Good evening, Mayor and council. I'm very excited to present to you all the plan for transforming the large electric utility boxes with vibrant artwork. As you can see here, the before and after images clearly demonstrate the significant visual improvement to the utility boxes once they're wrapped with artwork. These are actual installations. Per the direction of City Council, HPS Energy will be using the Art in Public Places funds to transform our large electric utility boxes into pieces of art that depict the character of our city. The box wraps, the box wraps are an affordable and tangible option for improving a community. Through this program, the city has an opportunity to help transform Homestead and advance our mission of beautification of the local streets. Several other Florida cities have recently initiated utility box art projects, and the projects have been very well-received in those other cities. The projects not only beautify the streets, but they also foster a sense of community pride and ownership. The utility boxes can reflect a variety of themes as shown here, and guided by the City Council's vision and incorporating the elements that are meaningful to the community and its residents is what we're striving to do, and here are just some of the, the variety of themes. There's scenes from nature, there's storytelling with pictures and abstract art. Some key facts. Um, our focus is on wrapping these boxes that are located along the main thoroughfares of the city. It's important to note that these boxes are only found in areas where electrical facilities are underground. So I know Councilwoman Bailey was asking about the southwest area, and since the majority of the facilities there are overhead, that's why we don't have a lot of boxes there. But as we move forward and begin undergrounding different sections, wherever we go and put in underground, we will also be incorporating the wraps at, with that construction. And we're looking at the main thoroughfares that you see there, and those are the areas that have the, the bulk of the boxes. And we have some options here. This, these are options for Campbell Drive. We want to try to reflect the unique character of each area, and we're proposing design options that are tailored to represent the distinct identity of each section of the city. And here's Campbell. Then we have options for downtown. We incorporated some of the scenes from the charrettes here, as well as some vintage photos, and just scenes from nature and entertainment. Design options for Maori are shown here. Um, and these are for some of our gated communities on the east side, with some, uh, just scenes from nature, some landscaping. And this is a map, again, that shows, it highlights the locations of the boxes, and again, there's a higher concentration on the east side of town due to the greater proportion of underground electrical infrastructure on the east side compared to the west. Project cost, um, for the fabrication, printing, and installation, we're looking at about forty thousand dollars. And then design and working with those artists, another twenty-five thousand. The bulk of the cost will be covered by Art in Public Places, um, but HPS Energy will also contribute some towards, uh, the overall cost for this project. And lastly, the next steps, following council's input, are provided here, where we will engage with the vendors for wrapping, then we will work with development services, engage with those artists, and coordinate all of the logistics through the HPS Energy Department. We plan to have roughly fifty boxes wrapped by the end of the fiscal year. And so that concludes the presentation.
Hey, thank you. Appreciate it. Counsel? Councilor, Vice Mayor Fletcher?
Yes, thank you. I understand initially, again, this is going to be for the electrical boxes, but we also have other boxes throughout the city, traffic control devices, A T and T, and we look at expanding that to those in the future as well and working with those vendors.
Yes, actually, Vice Mayor, that's exactly why I mentioned that we may have to make changes to the ordinance, the City Code. Uh, usually you cannot go back and mandate somebody to change something that's already been permitted. But once they come in for, perhaps permit for upgrades or repairs, then you can add additional requirements to change the theme as well as the covering and the texture of those cabinets.
But I would- with their permission, we could, could retrofit the existing boxes.
Obviously, we will reach out to FPL especially, that has a franchise agreement with the city in the southeast area of the city in terms of having, and actually, they've already indicated interest in doing some of this type of conversions. And I will reach out to them depending on the budget reallocation we have, to see if we can extend it to other utilities.
And, and Mr. Manager, if I may, uh, some of the other cities that we looked at, they have done this with their FDOT boxes. And looking online, there are agreements that you have to enter into with FDOT in order to do that, but other cities have partnered with other utilities.
Do we know, I mean, damage and vandalism aside, what are the lifespan of these wraps, generally?
I, I have not got that information, Mr. Mayor.
And here's why I ask. You know, we proposed doing the rodeo logo. As long as we've designed a two-hundred-and-fiftieth anniversary logo, I think that should probably be incorporated into the mix as well. And at some point in the future, that will be stale. So, you know, but I, it looks like it's maybe, what, eight hundred to nine hundred dollars a box to, to wrap it? That's, you know, I'm coming out of the art fu- art fund, just something to, uh, to consider. And to clarify, from my understanding from the briefing, that some of those locations on the map that are, are in, are in fact behind gates will not be included. These will only be on true public main thoroughfares at, at this point, that the Malibu Waterstone boxes inside are, are not going to be included as they're shown on the map there. Um, my only comment for the design options for downtown is that the two, the two slides from the charrette don't really exist. I don't know that we want to create something that was just conceptual. I mean, we have between our city logo, the two-fifty logo, and the tremendous collection of vintage photos and other things that we have available to us. I'd kind of like to see that in, in the downtown, on the chrome corridor. Um, you know, I don't want to approve this and be, and be locked into, at least for downtown, these specific, and I don't have any issues with any of the others. I think they, they fit and are appropriate, but let's, let's relook at, at the options for downtown.
Will do, will do.
So I guess, Mr. Manager, you just see some direction to-
So, I, yeah, we need, we need direction to proceed while leaving the door open.
Yeah.
I'm sure some elected officials might have some other ideas. Feel free to give us those ideas to, to include.
Yeah. So let's- let's hear from our art maven and consultant, Councilwoman Bailey.
Um, I think this is the first time ever. I'm jealous of the east side. Um, so yes, I think we should definitely reconsider the downtown ones, and what, uh, what came up in our briefing is to see, I know with the Art in Public Places funds, there are specific ways that we have to do the call to artists, but City Manager was going to look and see how those HPS funds could potentially be used to specifically target local artists. So maybe, you know, around Maori or the downtown, we could really consider something that's a lot more of a local perspective.
And even students.
For sure. I would love to see if there's-
Contest in middle and high school.
I did request a bigger map, so I could see a little better, but if there are some boxes that are close to schools, I think that would be an amazing thing to reach out to some of the students, even if it's a group, uh, group activity that each side is, uh, is something from different students. With those wraps, it's a really easy way to make it all fit together, even if they're separate drawings. So I think it, I'm, I think we have a lot of potential here. So definitely have a look at that map along with me, and we can see if we can come up with some creative ways to make this, uh, even more special.
It can, it can happen quickly.
That is, yes.
Councilman Roth?
Yeah, that's, that's the thing that I liked, was that we can actually interchange them if we want to. And, uh, during my meeting, they mentioned maybe highlighting, you know, council members' birthdays out there with our pictures on it.
I thought I was special.
I voted no on that, by the way, but, but, uh-
Is that a sort of way of saying we have one today?
Yeah. No, it doesn't- But, yeah, I mean, I, I like the fact that the interchange, and I think, you know, as we get closer to, uh, next year, with the, um, I don't even know how to say it, the two-hundred-and-fifty-year anniversary of the United, you know, of America, maybe we do a campaign just specifically for that, just to highlight that the city is well in front of this celebration coming up next year. So it's, I know it costs a little bit of money, but I think that, um, the, the Public Art Committee has a pretty hefty balance right now, which forty thousand dollars is not a lot to, to hinder it. So, just my thoughts.
So, and, and this is that, you know, the proverbial bang for the buck. For a relatively small amount of money, this, this is a lot of impact. So, do you need that by formal vote or just assent of council? Mr. Attorney?
Assent of council, I think we have a sense of where you want to go, and you'll, you'll see this again for the approval of-
Sure. The actual designs.
When, when the actual award of an agreement, too.
No, because it's under, it's under the City Manager's-
It's all going to be under the-
Yeah, there, yeah, I think there are some other legal issues that needs to be worked out in terms of copyrights and patents eventually, so the City Attorney is going to provide guidance.
All right. Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Anything further, Mr. Manager? Anything further?
Um, at the car meeting, I'll make some additional comments on some unrelated issues for now. No.
Very good. Well, seeing nothing further, the special call, do we have a motion to adjourn? Moved and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
And we will convene the committee, the whole meeting, in just a moment. And move it even faster than this. Good evening, everyone, and welcome. I'd like to call the City of Homestead Committee the whole meeting to order. Today is Tuesday, June tenth, two thousand and twenty-five, and the time is now six forty-two, six forty-three P. M. Madam Clerk, can we have a roll call, please?
Councilman Davis? Councilman Roth?
Here.
Councilman Cannibal? Vice Mayor Fletcher?
Here.
Mayor Lawson?
Here. All right. Mr. Manager, do you have any additions, deletions, or deferrals for this agenda?
No, Mr. Mayor. It's only one item agenda.
Okay. All right, we have before us the minutes of May thirteenth, two thousand and twenty-five. Do we have a motion to approve? Moved by the Vice Mayor? Seconded by, uh, Councilman Cannibal. There are no questions, corrections, all in favor? Any opposed? Opposed? Next item is motion placed, car number forty-five seventy-six on the council agenda, a National League of Cities Service Line Warranty Program Agreement. Mr. Manager?
So, Mr. Mayor and council, this is a resolution directing the administration to proceed with a new warranty program that will allow city residents to engage the services of the vendor in order to create a citywide warranty program for unanticipated and potentially costly service line repairs and replacements in private properties. Uh, there are three complete and separate voluntary programs with no service fees, as well as no deductibles. Customers can cancel the warranties at any time with a nominal fee on a monthly basis. They can begin to avail themselves of the services of this company, and the premiums are collected and ten percent is remitted to the city. Uh, and by the way, this program is at no cost to the city. We do have a representative of the vendor here, in case you want to make some comments or presentation before we dive into the details.
All right, thank you. Welcome.
Thank you, Mayor and council, for having me here this evening. I'm happy to kind of walk you through our program, how we work with cities across the country, and really answer any questions that you all may have. My name's Ashley Schaworski, and I represent the National League of Cities Service Line Program. So our program here, it's the only one that's endorsed by the National League of Cities, but the company I do work for is called HomeServe, and we administer the program. And we've been offering this program here in the U. S. for over, um, twenty years, and have been partnered with the National League of Cities to provide this program since two thousand and ten. We're lucky to be partnered with over thirteen hundred municipalities all across the country and serve, um, you know, uh, close to five million customers. But just to give you a little background of how our program was developed, obviously, we all know aging infrastructure is an issue for cities all across the U. S. And we know the city here is doing their best to either upgrade or maintain your public infrastructure, but the homeowner's portion of these lines were kind of being forgotten about. Not on purpose, we just know there's only so much as a city that you can actually do on a private side or force a resident to do on their side as much as you'd probably like to be able to. Um, so that's really why the National League of Cities went out and did research. They wanted to make a program like this readily and easily available to cities all across the country. So they went out, did the research, and we were the company they chose to provide the program. So what we actually do is we would partner with the city in order to make our completely optional protections available to your residents here, and we provide homeowners with protection on their external water or well lines, sewer or septic lines, and their in-home plumbing. Additionally, we also have some energy products for interior electric repairs, heating and cooling system, and , um, water heaters. And really, by partnering with us, you're just making these options available to the residents here that otherwise would not be, but it's always up to them if they decide to enroll. The program is absolutely no cost to the city to make available, and the city does receive a revenue for their participation. What I, though, always think is the best benefit of this program is it really does help to raise awareness. Pretty much every city I speak with across the country, I hear that same type of thing, that if a resident does have some type of issue with one of their external lines, most of the time their first call is to someone on staff here. Um, and then the staff has to be that bearer of bad news, explaining to a resident at the worst time possible that these lines are not covered by the city or typically their homeowner's insurance. So that is really why I think of our program as a free public awareness campaign, because all of your residents receive a letter in the mail from us, and the beginning of that letter is educational. So that way, even if they do not enroll in the protection, at least now they're well aware of which portion of these lines they're responsible for, and that just you as the city did try to take that proactive approach and help and educate them of that. Um, so that way, if they still give you, you a call, it just makes that phone call a little bit easier for the utility staff here. Also, a large benefit of this program is that we do only use local area plumbers. So if we were to partner with the city, we actually develop a contractor network to serve your residents' claims, and you all could be as much or as little involved in that process as you like to be, where some of our partners will provide us a list of plumbers that you're familiar with, already working with, or that might be well-known in your region, and some don't want to get involved. Either way is fine with us. But with all of those plumbers, we do go through a vetting process to verify they are from your local community, that they meet your licensing requirements, that they have proper insurance, um, and additionally, we conduct background checks and drug screenings. We always just want to make sure that it's someone that a homeowner here feels completely comfortable with coming to their home or inside of their home. And as for the important thing, what our program covers, um, the first ones I'm going to talk about are our core programs, which is our water products. Um, so we offer an external water line protection, external sewer line protection, and our in-home plumbing. And as I mentioned, you're just making the suite of all of these product options available to your residents, but it's up to them if they decide to enroll. They're à la carte, so they can pick and choose out of the seven that are in the agreement. Um, but the first three is, um, that I'm going to start talking about are what we consider the water products, even those water and sewer. Um, but if a resident decides to enroll in either the external water line or the external sewer line coverage, they're set up very similarly. So we cover those lines wherever they become the resident's responsibility, all the way to where they enter their home. So that way, if a resident were to be having an issue, whether it's a broken, a cracked, a leaking pipe, a tree root issue, a claw- a leaking pipe, a tree root issue, a clog, low water pressure, really anything that they're noticing an issue, they make one call to us 24 hours a day, seven days a week, 365 days a year. We'll dispatch that local plumber. That plumber will go to their house to see what's causing the issue, and they would repair or replace those lines as needed. What the resident does receive for their protection is up to $8,500 towards each and every incident. They can have as many incidents as they need. It's always up to that $8,500 per incident. That does include street repair, if that's their responsibility, sidewalk repair, and all permitting costs. So we make sure that your local plumbers are following your rules and getting all of the proper permits, and it includes that in there. And what's nice is we never have any type of service fee or deductible with any of our programs, because we know a lot of times that $50 call-out fee can actually stop someone from actually getting their issues taken care of. So there's never a service fee or call-out fee. In addition to our exterior options, we also do offer an in-home plumbing, which was kind of developed by our municipal partners, as it was that missing piece of the puzzle. And this covers any of the water, sewer, or drain lines that are in your home after the point of entry that could be broken or leaking. It also includes lines that may be in their slab or basement floor and repair of clogged toilets. And our in-home is very similar, no service fee or deductible, no annual or lifetime limit, no limit on number of claims. In our in-home, your resident does receive up to $3,000 towards each and every repair incident. And we do come to find with any of our programs, residents are typically a little bit more proactive about getting their issues taken care of, because we know a lot of times a resident is nervous to call a plumber or electrician or HVAC person because they don't have that money. So now they know the cost of determining their issue and getting it taken care of isn't coming out of their pocket. And then since the city also does provide energy to your residents here, we do offer a suite of energy products that your residents could make, that your residents could choose to enroll into. We offer interior electric, heating and cooling, and then water heater, which has become very popular. We know water heaters are not lasting as long as they used to, so it's a repair or replacement up to $1,500 annually. And as I mentioned, you're just making these options. They pick and choose what's best for them. And then I know the big thing everyone wants to know is what's the city's involvement in the program? So what we do is we enter into a marketing agreement with the city, and it just lets you know how we get the word out about these programs, which is through direct mail. And that is the city's involvement. We would customize that mail piece directly for your residents. We would work with the staff here to customize that, work through any edits and changes that they want to see. And then once we get the approval, we let you know the dates that we mail those out. That way, everyone knows when they're going out, what is going out. And if we don't get approval, even if you've approved it in the past, we do not mail. So the city's always in complete control on if and when something were to go out. We typically do market one to two products at a time, so you don't have to worry about us overwhelming the residents with the seven that are in the agreement. But that doesn't mean they can't enroll in any of them at any time by giving us a call or going to our website. We just typically focus on one at a time when we're doing those mailers, and we typically send letters out two to three times per year. And then to give you an idea of what that letter looks like, the beginning is really that educational piece, letting your residents know which portion of the lines that they're responsible for. It has their terms and conditions put into frequently asked questions that everyone can understand. But it is an introductory letter where the city helps to introduce the program to its residents, but it always states, "We are the company providing it," and it's 100% optional. The letter does include the city logo or logo on the envelope. That way, your residents know this is a program that you all are making available to them. But on that letter is all of our information, our logo, our phone numbers, the only number on there, so they call us with questions or to sign up. So we do handle all the aspects of the program, the marketing, billing, claims, customer service. And as I mentioned, absolutely no cost to the city to make available, and the city does receive 10% of the premiums that we do collect in the form of a revenue. A lot of city partners do different things with this. Obviously, you all could do anything that you want, and some put it into the general fund. But we also do have some partners that will use it to help residents that are having trouble paying a utility bill from month to month. We know you're already trying to help when you can, so it can go to offset some of those costs. It can go to different public infrastructure projects, like your RAPs you're paying for, or really however the city sees fit. And lastly, we do have over 1,300 municipal partners all across the U.S. We have 32 here in Florida, and I know I've rambled on this evening, so I'm sure you also may have some questions for me as well.
Thank you. Appreciate that. Thanks for coming down. Question. You talk in terms of sewer. Clearly, our oldest neighborhoods, and we calculate about 1,500 homes that are still on septic tank. Is there coverage for the lines from the home out to the septic tank? Is it, when you say sewer, is septic tank lines included?
Sure. So our program is actually sewer-septic, so we don't cover the tank, but we cover the line where it leads the tank to where it enters their home. So yes, they're still eligible.
Okay, very good, because that's still a, a major factor for a pretty decent number of, of homeowners, and certainly some of the oldest neighborhoods are more susceptible to that. Councilman Roth.
Thank you, Mayor. Are, are there any exclusions to the materials, such as polybutylene pipes, asbestos clay, cast iron, or galvanized pipes that are in the ground, or polybutylene that actually delivers water?
There's no material exclusion. They just have to have an issue with their line. So we won't go out simply, you know, someone calls us and says, "I have a lead line, I want you to remove it," something like that, or galvanized. We don't go out. But if they're having an issue with their line, we follow all codes, so we would replace an, an entire line that's required by code, any outdated material.
So when you say the interior plumbing, so that'd be plumbing inside the walls that lead to faucets and showers? And what about the fixtures themselves?
Sure, it does not include the fixtures themselves, up to the fixture.
And I think some of the programs were optional aside from the main program. I saw some pricing, I think it was $7.99 a month or something. Do you have something that lists all of the pricing?
Yeah, so it is in the agreement. I think that is attached to the agenda, but I can, I have them written. So the water service line program is $5.99 per month. The sewer service line, external, is $7.99. Our in-home plumbing is $9.99. Interior electric is $5.99. Heating is $12.99. Cooling is $14.99, and water heater is $12.99. And they're all separate, all optional. Residents can pay us a lot of ways. Most people, a lot of people like to pay annually, so they don't have to think about it, they'll mail us a check, but that doesn't mean they're stuck with us for a year. They can cancel for any reason at any time and receive a refund for any unused premium, but they also can set it up monthly or quarterly, whatever is best for them, and we handle all of that billing.
So, so for the cooling, does it, does it include any routine maintenance, oil cleanings, things like that? I mean, if a capacitor goes out on an air conditioning system, are you guys coming out and replacing those types of things? If the fan motor goes out, if, you know, any of those things happen?
Correct. So it's a maintenance, it's, it's not preventative maintenance, but if there's any issue with it, you just call us, they'll send someone out to determine what is the issue, and then they'll replace those parts up to that coverage limit.
Interesting.
Like I, I know I came home one day last summer, I had that issue, and they were, I called late at night, and they were there the next morning, just replaced some, something that I don't know what that is, but, and then it was back working. So, yeah, so it's, it's not a replacement for heating and cooling, but it is a repair. So if you need a new part or something, they will do that up to the coverage limit.
Got it. And then there's no deductibles or no copays?
Correct.
Very good. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor? And then Councilman Davis?
Just one thing I did note, you know, did notice, it did tell us that each one of these could go up as much as $1 per month, up to 12 months. So your $5.99 could be $16.99 or $17.99 by the end of the year, depending, I don't know how often that happens, but the, the wording's in here for that to happen on each one of these.
The agreement states it can go up $1 per year, per month.
$1 per year, per month?
With, yes. Typically, I've been here, I've been with the company for 11 years. We've only had one price increase in those 11 years, but that is in there, that it can go up $1 per year, but it would be on a monthly.
There's a typo in here, because it says $1 per month, per plan, in any 12-month period.
Okay. Yeah, well, then I, we can fix that. But I think it's, it's definitely meaning $1 per.
Understood.
Per year. It used to be 50 cents.
I could be reading into it wrong.
Yeah.
Thank you. Hey, Vice Mayor, Councilman Davis?
Ma'am, I have a question of how do we assess the effectiveness of this program? Is there a matrix that we use? Done so many of these types of repairs, so many of those. Then how do we benchmark against other communities to, to look at the effectiveness of the program here in Homestead?
So we share data with you frequently, as frequently as you want to see it. We, we typically get updates on a monthly basis, but most partners don't want us bothering them monthly with it, but we can set that up however you like, where it will have the breakdown of number of customers, breakdown of customers per policy, claims dollars that we save your residents, number of claims. We also share customer satisfaction scores specifically for Homestead. So every resident that files a claim gets a survey. It's kind of like Uber rate us out of five stars. Our national average is a 4.8 out of five stars, but we will share specifically in your community what you're receiving. If there's any notes that customers give us, we will share that with you, so you can see what your actual residents are saying about the program. But also to note, anyone that rates us under a four, we actually call directly to see what happened. Was it us? Was, you know, was it the local plumber? Was it the call center? Kind of where the breakdown was, so that we can improve it for the future. But yes, we do share that information with you regularly. And we have a lot of other ways to get the words out about the program. None of it's a requirement of the program, but we do see a lot of success with, we'll give you information for your website. A lot of times if a resident gets a letter in the mail, the first place they go is either, is your website to make sure this is a program that you are participating in. So we have a great landing page and different assets we can share that you can put on your website. Same thing, we have a lot of things for social media, providing updates to residents about maybe a neighbor filing a claim, getting their issue taken care of. Again, not a requirement, but we do see that it helps to get the word out about the program. We have things for your office. We can also set up things like on your IVR if residents are calling in and wanting to learn more, just so they come right to us. That really helps to increase the numbers of the program, but also help to eliminate any questions you'll get about the program. So we can be as, as, as integrated as you want or as hands-off, so it's really whatever's the best fit for the city.
Thank you. Anything further? All right, so we have a motion by Councilman Roth to put this on the council agenda, signed by Councilman Davis. All in favor? Any opposed? Thank you. Appreciate coming down again. All right, Mr. Attorney?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, thank you. Before we adjourn, I wanted to take the opportunity to request two executive sessions, one in the matter of Zamora v. Gerald Ricardo, I'm going to mispronounce this, Pinyor. It's case at all, it's case number 23-004528 in Miami-Dade County Circuit Court, and Colero v. Gary McIntosh in City of Homestead, case number 23-008698, also in Miami-Dade County Circuit Court.
Thank you. Let's make it happen. Mr. Manager?
Yes, Mr. Mayor and Council, just a point of privilege, as we prepare for the hurricane efforts that started on June 1st, it's my pleasure to introduce to you the city's new emergency manager, Mr. Jaime Hernandez. Mr. Hernandez is joining us from the city of Hollywood, Florida, as the city's new emergency manager. He's been tasked with rolling out robust preparedness portal, as well as innovative platforms for us to be able to engage with, with our residents. Mr. Portal currently before joining us was a member of the Board of URC for the tri-county area, and he was instrumental in voting for the city of Homestead to receive funding, proposed funding for some of our EOC programming that we're looking into. Welcome on board, Mr. Jaime Hernandez.
Thank you, Mr. City Manager, Mr. Mayor, Vice Mayor, council members, staff, Jamie Hernandez, Jaime Hernandez, depending on who you ask, emergency management here at the City of Homestead. It's a privilege and an honor to be here, to serve the residents, businesses, and visitors here in the City of Homestead. I am a native of Miami-Dade County, and I come to you very excited and very eager to, to, to move forward with the, with the emergency management program here in Homestead. I don't think we need to get into too much detail with the history of natural disasters here and catastrophic events in Homestead. So it's really an exciting opportunity to, to come in and serve the community and prepare them for, for hurricane season and all hazards, you know, that may be of, of a threat here to, to this region. Thank you, and I appreciate the opportunity.
Welcome. Appreciate it. Good timing.
And also.
Good timing you to be here.
Absolutely.
Just as a reminder, the Juneteenth celebration is holding on the 14th of June from 6:00 PM at Miami-Dade College on the fourth floor. And also, the Women Area Veterans Summit is happening on June 12th at Dickerson Community Center at 9:00. Thank you, Councilman Bailey, Councilman Davis, as well as Deputy City Manager Kima, for volunteering to be as part of the, of the program. Earlier this evening, I sent out a quick notice to information filtering that there might be some activities this weekend. Homestead PD and the chief is prepared, working strenuously hard to make sure that the city is monitoring the whole programming and what is going on, and make sure the city is safe and sound. Officially, the Splash Pad at James Archer Smith is now open earlier today. So thank you, folks from parks and recreation and open spaces for doing such a great job. The city is officially designated as a passport agency by the federal government. So the City Clerk, Madam Sewell, she and her staff are going to be receiving applications for new passport applications, as well as renewals here at City Hall. Thank you for everyone that was involved, especially Mr. Josh Rios from my office, as well as the City Clerk and our staff. I think that's all I have for now. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Councilman Roth?
Yeah, just want to give a shout out to the Homestead Police Department. Give you a little insight to what I do on the weekends. I was at home in bed about midnight, just got done watching OP Live, which is a live police show. And about 45 minutes later, I was already asleep. I hear, "Get on the ground! Get on the ground!" And I looked up, and I turned the TV off, it was off. And I looked out my window, and I see the police lights everywhere. Turned out, three juveniles were breaking into cars in the villages, and our police department got them that night. And I did go outside, because one of my neighbors was freaking out. I was like, "Don't worry, this doesn't happen all the time here, this is just once in a while." But they actually recovered a .55, which is a gun, as well, that night in my neighbor's yard. So thank you, Chief. Thank you to the proactiveness of our police department that are helping to, you know, at least combat a little bit the 26s that happen to motor vehicles. Public service announcement, folks, lock your cars. They can't get in them most of the time if you lock your cars. So lock your cars. And again, appreciate it. It did happen, I think, last night again. There was another gentleman, they, they sent me some video on that was in the Quetzal Court area. So apparently, they're, they're focusing on the villages right now. The fact that we arrested three on Saturday night, Sunday morning, was great. But, you know, just keep those patrols up, and we really appreciate everything that you guys do at Homestead HPD and our police department. So thank you very much for that. Thank you, and I'll.
Amen. Thank you.
I'll forward that to the folks who caught them.
Anything further, Council? Councilman?
Yeah, I want to congratulate the Parks and Recreation Department. The summer camp is amazing. The coordination, even with the police. This morning, the old police cars was there. Everything is so nice. Thank you, thank you very much. Just make sure they don't put greenpeace in the arrojo por yo, please, because the kids don't, don't like the, the greenpeace, okay?
And with that, do we have a motion to adjourn? Moved by Cannibal, seconded by Roth. All in favor? Aye. Good night, everyone. Thank you.